This meeting is being televised live on Cable Access Channel 9 and is being taped by PBD Access Television and is also being recorded by our city council's stenographer. Please join me in a moment of silence.
So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take, end the suspension of the rules. I'm going to ask that we receive items 8E and 8F.
So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Council Rosignol, if you could read both those documents into the record.
I'd be happy to, Mr. President. Well, I guess I won't be happy to read the first one. Dear Honorable Members, as a follow-up letter to my communication dated June 21st, 2018, I want to officially notify the city council of my intention to retire effective January 30th, 2020, after 43 years of service to the City of Peabody. It has been a pleasure and an honor to serve as your city clerk for the past 14 and a half years. As I look back over the 43 years, I can honestly say I have no regrets, and the many friendships and respect I have gained with my peers is my biggest accomplishment. I sincerely thank every member of this city council, Mayor Betancourt, and past city officials for the many courtesies and support you have given me. I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge that I could not have been successful without the support and dedication from my staff, who man the front lines every day and makes our office truly great. Sincerely yours, Timothy E. Spanos, City Clerk. Forty-three years, I'm impressed. 8F is, "Dear Honorable Members, attached please find an excerpt from the city council's regular meeting minutes for June 9th, 2005. The excerpt shows the actions required by the city council to elect a new city clerk. Upon acceptance of my retirement letter, I would strongly recommend that the council put forth, in nomination, the name of Allison Danforth, 16 Wentworth Drive, Beverly, Mass, as city clerk, to be effective January 31st, 2020, for the term to expire on December 31st, 2020." Allison has been with the city council since July 1 of 2005, when I took over as city clerk. Allison has attended almost every city council meeting and subcommittee meeting ever since in this transcribing of council minutes: verbatim, public hearing and committee meetings, budget sessions, tax classification hearings, and et cetera. Allison has a great historical knowledge of the city council matters for the past 15 years. As you all know, Allison was hired as a full-time employee in May of 2017 and has been involved in every facet of the day-to-day operations of the city clerk's office, including not only city council matters but election and city clerk procedures. Allison is also in the process of attaining her certificate, certification, I'm sorry, as a certified municipal clerk. Allison has a great communication skill and a very good rapport with the public and has developed great working relationships with the mayor's office, city councilors, and all other city departments. I would respectfully, excuse me, request the city council put forth into nomination the name of Allison Danforth as Peabody's ninth city clerk. Tim Spanos.
Thank you, Council Rosignol. With that, I would like to recommend that we nominate Allison Danforth as the ninth city clerk of the City of Peabody, effective January 31st, 2020, for the unexpired term of Tim Spanos, ending in December 31st, 2020. And with that...
A move, Mr. Chairman.
With that motion, I will open it up to the council for comment. Council Charis.
Thank you, Council President. I think we're extremely lucky. Not only does Allison comes with the learning curve that she received from Tim, but certainly what Tim had learned from Natalie. And I don't think any other city that I know of that has that much expertise handed down. Each and every time that I needed a call to city clerk's office, if Tim wasn't able to answer the phone, Allison was, and I felt so confident that the information that she was giving me, it almost sounded like Tim was talking to me himself. I am very pleased and certainly will support this, knowing that Allison is going to do almost the same job as Tim has done that I've been experiencing the last four years. So, the city is very lucky to have somebody who's able to step up and fulfill those shoes and fulfill the need that the city has with confidence of Allison. So, thank you.
Council Rosignol.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to say to Mr. Spanos, thank you for your years of service, being on the school committee for eight years and for the past two years on the city council. You handle yourself and your office with dignity, respect, and I admire you and your position immensely, and I thank you very much for your years of dedication. Second, Allison, pretty soon, I guess I'll jump the gum a little bit. Welcome. You've got big shoes to fill, but I know you'll be able to fill them. Third, I want to receive a late communication from Councilor David Gravel.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
It says, "Dear Council President Turco, unfortunately, I cannot be in attendance this evening for the appointment of Allison as our new city clerk. Please know and let the other councilors know that I fully support Allison for this position. She has done a fabulous job as our stenographer, and I know she possesses the skills and talents to do an equally great job as our next city clerk. Please extend my sincerest congratulations to Allison for this achievement." If you could please read this into the record, which I just did, I would appreciate it. Sincerely, Councilor Dave Gravel.
Thank you, Council. Council Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to also thank and commend the HR Department for the manner in which we are rolling this out with Tim's replacement, and also to thank Tim not only for all your years of service, but you did try to put in your retirement over a year ago, and then you graciously, because you were just Peabody through and through, decided that, you know, we stick it out, put in another year so that we could transition someone into your position as Natalie did you, and the city just continues to benefit from the commitment that we have from people like you and like Natalie and like Allison and Colleen, that you care so much about the way that the city is run, that it's done openly, honestly, thoroughly, and with so much history and institutional knowledge that Natalie had and that you have, and now that Allison brings aboard and Colleen assists, that that needs to really be highlighted, that you, after you felt the need to retire, you knew that the city needed one more year from you so that we could continue in the tradition and the precedent that had been set years ago by many councils, and I commend you for that in addition to everything else that you've done, and I thank you for everything, and I wholeheartedly endorse your recommendation of Allison, and I thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council. Council Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am in complete support of the motion before us, and I echo what Councilman Manning Martin just mentioned is, you know, real, it shows a lot of public service is the fact that you could, you were well within your means to walk away but stayed on for a smooth transition. And just, you know, Allison is really excited to have you aboard and take on the new role. You've been, both of you and everybody in the clerk's office, I know it's just, you know, I come down and we have a lot of laughs, but a couple of years ago when I didn't really, I was pulling papers to run for councillor at large, the respect, kindness, and information that you provided me was so helpful, and it was absolutely across the board. I know it's the same way you treat somebody that's been an incumbent for, or around for 20-something years, is the way you treated me, and I couldn't be more thankful to know that we're so well-served in that city clerk's office across the board, and I am really excited it'll be continuing. And Tim, you still got us for like, what, another 60 days? We can make a lot happen in the next 60 days, so buckle up. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo what my fellow colleagues have said. Tim, we'll talk about you in 60 days, but Allison, we're thrilled to have you. Thank you very much for your willingness to take the job, and, Tim, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like Councilor Gould, I am going to reserve comment on Mr. Spanos till the bitter end. We have you for more than 60 days, actually, so. And I would really like to reinforce some of the comments of my fellow councilors, in particular, Councilor Charis. I, you know, above and beyond having all the requisite experience for this position, Allison, you know, like Councilor Charis articulated, I've been going out of my way to try to work with you purposefully, just to kind of see what it would be like, the difference of working with you versus working with Tim. Unfortunately, we've had kind of this lengthy period of time to do that, and it has been, just as Councilor Charis described, essentially seamless. So, we are so fortunate to have somebody step into this position that is going to facilitate that seamless transition. I, I'm not, having worked in business for a long time, having a hire like that is almost unheard of, to have a near-zero learning curve, so it's, this is a perfect fit, and I am enthusiastically in support of this appointment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Council O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, as my wife has cautioned me to do. Tim, once again, we'll be chatting about your service in the next few meetings. I'm in full support of this motion. Allison, congratulations. Well done. Thank you.
Council Mitsoulas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim and I go back many years. I've known Tim since he was a little kid, and I was in this room when he became clerk, and I remember how proud his mother and father were, and I was pretty proud of him also. When I first got in the council almost 40 years ago, I took the presidency, my first term, and everyone said, "Don't do it, don't do it." Well, let me tell you, it was the easiest thing I ever had. I had Natalie Mager sit aside of me, okay, and she guided me right through this, that whole year. It was the easiest year I ever had, and I'm hoping maybe to do that again at some point, and I'm going to be looking to Allison to help me out here. But, you know, I look forward to Allison's call every two weeks. That's when our checks come in. She says, "Jim, your check arrived," so we rushed down to City Hall, Allison and Colleen. But, you know, all joking aside, I'll tell you, they've been, they were a big help. We're very fortunate to have the staff, the whole staff, Allison, Colleen, Grace, and Matt. You know, you walk into that office and you've got a crackerjack team, the City of Peabody's very fortunate, and we don't go through city clerks like other cities do. When we have a city clerk, they're here till they retire, so that tells you a lot about what we've got in the city, so congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, and not to beat a dead horse, I did want to say, Tim, first and foremost, I think 2015, at least we remember, I don't know if everybody remembers, but Council Charis and I had a recount. I was a new guy on the block, wasn't sure of the process. This office handled it seamlessly to the point where I was comfortable with the process. I thought, you know, it was a little extra work for him, a few weeks' worth of extra work, but it was, it was a great, it was a great experience and something great to see, and to see how wonderfully this office works. And really, it's all about Allison Danforth tonight, and similar to what my counterparts have said tonight, it's been seamless, it really has, and the hardest part for me is to address my emails to Allison instead of Tim and to remember to do that, but oftentimes I will put Tim, and Allison will respond back. So, it's been great, and I can't speak in favor of this enough. Allison, I wish you the best of luck, and I also wanted to recognize Tim's wife, Janice, and Janice, thank you for giving us Tim for as long as you have, and I know probably against your better judgment, he stayed on for a little while longer, but you can have him in 60 days. With that, I'd like to take a roll call vote on the motion by Councilman Manning Martin. Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Sasla. Sorry. Charis, see, I'm still new at this, so you gotta... [laughter] Charis. Gould.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing, two absent. Thank you very much, Councilors. Thank you.
We'll move to item 4A on the agenda. The clerk will read the notice. That's a recessed public hearing, so we don't need to read the notice. Will the petitioner come to the podium and please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street here in Peabody, Massachusetts, and I appear on behalf of Clayton Cruz, who is doing business as Boston Granite at 58 Walnut Street. He desires to use the premises as an office and shop for contractors specializing in the design, construction, and installation of countertops without outdoor storage. This matter has been on your agenda for a considerable length of time. I think that Councilman Mitsoulas wisely wanted to have the Board of Health and the Building Commissioner's Office make inspection of the premises and make recommendations as to what the proper operation, what the proper procedures would be for such an operation. They cut granite and make countertops predominantly out of granite and other stones. We have those recommendations. They are part of your package this evening. There is a recommendation from the Building Commissioner's Office, and there is additionally recommendations that are from the Board of Health, and my client is desirous of continuing in business and would embrace the suggestions made and will undertake the several recommendations that have been made to him, and then seek occupancy permit after the appeal period has passed and he has complied with these. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Is anybody here in the audience to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience here to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience here to speak in opposition to this petition? Anybody in the audience here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Council Mitsoulas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As most of you know, I had recessed this meeting maybe five times or more, and we just kept waiting to hear from the Health Department and the Building Inspector, and something must have got confused along the line because it took us a long time to get this. You know, I'm pro-business, as most of the council know, and I'll go out of my way to help businesses come in because I like to see people working. I mean, that's what makes a city. And I was not going to vote for this if I did not get these recommendations. They finally came in, and I spoke to the attorney, and his client is willing to instill all these recommendations. Am I...
Yes.
Okay.
Seeing them, as a matter of fact.
Okay, and I will allow, and I will take your word to it, and you will not get the permits until all this work is done anyways, so, right, okay, as long as we understand that. Before I read any of these off, any of the conditions, I'd like to receive item 8I and 8J. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve...
Council, you want to close the public hearing?
Oh, yes.
Actually, we'll open that up to the council first and...
Ahead of myself, sorry about that.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, Council Mitsoulas.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve a special permit for Clayton Cruz at 58 Walnut Street for the purpose, the use of the premises as an office and a shop for a contractor specializing in design, construction, and installation of countertops without outdoor storage. And on the motion, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to attach both these communications, I'll read them off if you'd like me to, one from the Building Inspector and one from the Board of Health, as conditions to be done before this permit is issued. So moved. Do you want me to read them or just accept it?
No, we can accept them into the record.
Okay. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion by Council Mitsoulas, roll call vote.
Councilors Mitsoulas.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing, two absent.
Thank you, Councilors.
Thank you. On item 4B, Councilman Manning Martin, if you could take the chair, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. We have item 4B, special permit hearing for Christine Lander, 99 Lynn Street, regarding allowing for a hair salon. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the city council of the City of Peabody, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 14th, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Franco-Weggen Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass, on the application from Christine Lander, 76 Glen Way Ave., Peabody, Mass, for a special permit seeking to allow for a hair salon at 99 Lynn Street, Peabody, Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Councillor, John G. Turco, City Council President.
Thank you. Tim, and is the petitioner here, Christine Lander? The petitioner? Ms. Lander, would you like to come up and state your name and address into the record and tell us what you'd like to do?
Hi, my name is Christine Lander. Just a little bit about myself, I am very excited. I am hoping to start a business in Peabody, and I am Peabody-born and raised. I actually graduated Peabody High School with a cosmetology license, and I'm really excited to be able to bring that to Peabody, that energy and the motivation to other young girls like myself, and I really hope that this all goes great because this is my dream. I've wanted to do this since I was probably six years old. I know that there was a little bit of people wondering about parking and stuff, I just kind of wanted to go over that first and foremost. It's not, we only are going to have four chairs, so the maximum people in there are probably eight, so we're thinking there's two side streets, people can park on those. I have currently working at a salon that has no parking, and you have to walk like a mile to get to it, and I'm telling you, women will walk anywhere to get their hair done, so I think that that's really not much of an issue at all. A little bit more is, I think I would just love to be able to give back to the community a little bit. When I was in high school, I had a lot of people that came in to our cosmetology room and taught for us just for fun, you know, they just loved to do it, they loved to inspire the young people, and I would just love to be a part of that. I would love to be able to give back to my community and really just help young girls grow, and boys, whoever. I just, I'd love to get them in my salon and even teach them on weekends and times that they wanted help, so that's kind of what I'm hoping to do here.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in favor of the petitioner? Sure, come on up, folks, and read your name and address into the record. Anyone else that plans to speak, could you just come right on up and stand behind the podium, and we'll take you all one at a time? And I think Councilor Turco, do we have a late communication you'd like to accept?
Motion to receive a late communication from Tom Paris, and just for the record, that communication essentially says that he is in favor of this petition, but he did want you to be cognizant of the parking at his building across the street because there's a lot of pickup and drop-off of the dry cleaner there, so if you could just make that known to your clients, and we'll discuss it further when we get to the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Okay, if you could just state your name and address and...
My name is Cheryl English. My address is 19 Manomet Road, Peabody, and I'm here to fully support her petition to, Christine's petition to have a or open a hair salon on Lynn Street. I am here as her former Peabody High School cosmetology teacher. She was a delightful student, she was a very creative student. I knew that this would be her destiny. She's worked hard, she has consistently given back to the community, and as, I am not no longer employed in the City of Peabody, but at the current school where I do work in Wakefield at Northeast Tech, she does serve on our advisory board. She's the chairman of our advisory board. She comes into the classroom, and she serves as an extremely positive role model for the younger students, and I can't think of a better person to open a salon in South Peabody. I think that she would be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood, and I wholeheartedly support her future in this business, and I hope you will give her a positive consideration for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Donna Saxonis. I live at Edgemere Road in Lynn Field, and I was also Christine's cosmetology teacher, and I'm here to encourage her to follow through with her dream and tell you that she has an excellent ethic. She gives, like she said, back to her community. She was the first to volunteer to do, anyone that came into the school system. I'm very, very proud of her. I owned a salon at one time, then I went into teaching, so I know how important this is to Christine, so I hope you all consider that she can follow her focus and build her business in Peabody, and you'll all be there. By the way, this is a sample of, my sister is my hairdresser, she now has a broken shoulder, so I had to go to Christine, so this is an example of her work, and I hope you all like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Heather Scanlon. I am the owner of Ginger's Closet, located right beside Christine's new salon, hopefully. I welcome her into the neighborhood. I'm very excited, and it's going to actually help my business. I am very concerned about the parking, and as I understand, I didn't know it was four chairs, I thought it was six chairs you were going to have.
No, we're only doing four.
You're only going to do four, okay, that's perfect. But also about the parking, that's my only concern. Just wanted to go on record that I'm concerned about it, but I see no reason why, any other reason why she shouldn't be able to get this going, her business. I look forward to her being... I am the owner of Ginger's Closet located right beside Christine's new salon, hopefully. I welcome her into the neighborhood. I'm very excited and it's going to actually help my business. I am very concerned about the parking and as I understand, I didn't know it was four chairs, I thought it was six chairs you were going to have.
No, we're only doing four.
You're only going to do four, okay, that's perfect. But also about the parking, that's my only concern. Just wanted to go on record that I'm concerned about it, but I see no reason why, any other reason why she shouldn't be able to get this going, her business. I look forward to her being my neighbor. Thank you.
I just want to state one more quick thing. So the whole, the parking thing, I know it's kind of a squishy subject and there's, you know, a few people, but the one good thing is, so for example, Ginger's Closet does open at 11 and closes at 6. The bulk of our clients do come in around 6 o'clock, which is after work hours, so we don't, most of the businesses in that surrounding area do close around 5:30, 6 o'clock, so that does alleviate a lot of the problem. And honestly, the other portion of the people that come in are early birds that come in at 8:00 AM, so that also alleviates that kind of an issue. So that midday, that's where everybody can kind of find parking and walk a mile. Just kidding, not really, but, you know.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of the petitioner? Is there anyone to speak in opposition to the petitioner? Anyone in opposition? Last call, opposition being none. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Councilor Robb. So for those of you, I think everybody knows where it is, but the location is at the corner of Lynn and County Street, as you take the right off of County Street onto Lynn, Tim's barber shop, it's three businesses at that location. Some of you, before my time, may have known it as a video store at one point. It's in the BN district, so obviously, we all know it's been addressed or brought up that parking is the major issue there. I had the same concerns. I met with Christine, what, Saturday, last Saturday, and her family and I brought that up with parking and I also spoke to Tim Hallen and I repeatedly looked for a solution to the parking and I came to the conclusion, and I know this is unorthodox, there is no solution to the parking issue. That building has been there for decades and there have been many businesses there before, it's always found a way to work. I believe that this will find a way to work. There is, Win Against Avis just down the street, as you say, the average hair appointment is what, an hour? They, you know, they could park for an hour. There's four spaces directly in front that you share with the other establishments. What I did want to ask is that you address Mr. Paris's recommendation or request that you don't have people parking across the street. I know you don't completely control that, but we also have issues with, some residents on Coolidge are concerned about people parking across the street on Coolidge at the corner. So if they do do that, if you could just keep them away from the direct corner of Lynn Street, I think there's no parking here at a corner anyway, but do your best to help the neighborhood with this because we're taking a chance with the parking because I know this is your dream and I'd really like to see you open up there. Some of the other uses, when I spoke to Tim Hallen and today, he had three offers on this building, he had on this spot, he had a vape shop, he had a massage parlor, and he had a boxing studio. And when I spoke to him, it kind of solidified my decision that there'll be a parking concern no matter which of those, you know, which of those businesses open there. And out of the four, I would obviously prefer that you open your hair salon.
Thank you. One thing I can do, I don't know if this helps, but I do text confirmations for all of my clients, three days, three hours, and 30 minutes prior to their appointment, which does relay a small message, so it relays the date, the time, and then any specific parking information, so right now it does say, like, please park on the street that's located across from the salon that I'm currently at. And that does help, I mean, we haven't had, I haven't had any problems with my clients, so I think that that's definitely a plus.
Well, thank you, that would be helpful for the neighbors. You have Mr. Coughlin, who's director butler to the property and he's said in the past, he's had some issues with people parking, blocking a portion of his driveway. So all in all, I mean, we can't tell you to stop all parking, but I just wanted you to be cognizant that it was an issue. If this council so determines to approve your permit, I think we're going out on a limb with, you know, the four chairs and possibly eight people or eight parking spaces being required at that time. But I do wish you the best of luck, I do support this permit, I hope that you have a successful business. I think that that's what the BN neighborhood is for, is to directly service the abutting neighborhood and I think you'll do that and I'm glad you live in Ward 1, five streets down, so congratulations. I shouldn't say that yet, but I will open it up to the council. Excuse me, I'll give that back to Councilor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Councilors, Councilor Sharest?
Thank you, Christine. Obviously, I'm not going to come and patronize your shop. Sorry, just isn't going to happen, God doesn't see it that way, so. But I, one thing I do love to hear, that you're a Peabody kid, that went through Peabody school system, the vocational program, at the high school, you had your certificate from there, that's eight years that I spent on the school committee, that's what I love to hear.
Yeah.
That you're doing, you're coming back here to Peabody to open your shop.
I loved being in Peabody. I was at a salon for a year here last year and it was amazing and then I left and honestly, it's terrible. Peabody, there's just something about Peabody I love being.
Well, I think it's a job as a councilor's, we need to do everything we can to get people like you back home.
Thank you.
Congratulations, I don't, you know, I'm going to support this and again, sorry, I'm not, I'm not coming in.
It's okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sharest. Councilor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations, I think. You come well represented by Ms. English and Ms. Saxonis. They speak very highly of you. I really hope you can help with the Coolidge Avenue parking because there's, it's a narrow street as it is, Councilor Turco had addressed it with you, but it's a narrow street and the water department trucks go up and down that street, so...
Okay.
Please try to do your best to keep them off that street, but thank you, good luck.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. Any other councilors? Councilor DeMol?
Thank you, Lady Chairman. Christine, I love your enthusiasm, I really do. Brings back some memories. I owned a barber shop when I was 17, so I can relate to you, your excitement. As far as the parking goes, I have a shop right now, we only have one parking spot. We got two barbers and we're busy all day long, so, and people, they find places to park and there's, there's no complaints in the neighborhood and residents, I don't hear anything from them and plus I live in the neighborhood, so I would hear it if there was a problem. And right down the street from me, on Tremont Street, there's a hairdressing shop, probably 200 yards down the street, then there's another barber shop the next block and they only have one parking spot too. So it's going to work its way out. It's not something I think you should concern yourself with. I mean, be aware of it, but I think it'll work itself out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Okay, being none, I have a few comments. I was very concerned prior to this evening. I thought that there was going to be eight chairs, so you're only going to have four chairs, so is that going to be in the special permit?
I will add it as a condition. I also thought there was going to be six, but if you're willing to keep it at four, then I would like to add that to the permit as a condition of the permit.
Yeah, the only reason we would have six is potentially like bringing people in to train, but they would be used as mannequin heads, so we wouldn't have people sitting, there wouldn't be like cars or parking issues or anything. The chairs would just be literally used for dolls, for practice.
Okay, I mean, that's a, it's a fine line there, so I am going to put in the permit that you have four usable chairs for active hairdressing at any one time. If you're okay with that, I think that would make the council feel a lot better than six.
Yep, that's perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would prefer that and I would prefer only six, period.
Yes.
So if that's in the permit, it should just be four. And, and then I researched online and then I became less concerned because I find you to be very impressive even before this evening and then for you to have two teachers come up and give you such a bang-up recommendation. You're a very impressive young woman and I know that you're going to be very successful in whatever you do and I know that you'll be successful at this shop, so my concerns are alleviated at this point. And with respect to parking in that area, and the reason why I was very concerned is because I, I live in that area, so Toomey's is my dry cleaner, I do, I do go into Ginger's Closet, so I'm in that area a lot. And if, if all the parking spaces are filled, I'm going to drive by Toomey's. I'm not going to go. But, but hair salons are different. People, like you said, will go miles through, you know, snow, wind to get to there, right? But a dry cleaner's not the same, they'll find another dry cleaner.
Yes.
If I wanted to stop by Ginger's Closet and there's no parking, I'm going to, I'm going to go by. So this can work out well for that area, for you to have a successful business if it's the right size and not too much for that area, because you can bring people in who can do one-stop shopping and maybe bring their dry cleaning while they come see you, they can drop off dry cleaning or stop into some foot traffic for Ginger's Closet. So for four chairs, that size, and your enthusiasm and good business sense, I think that you're really going to be an asset to that area. So I have come full circle with your presentation tonight and your support, you clearly have support from your family and your neighbors and the surrounding businesses, so I think that this is going to be a great addition for that area. So I've come full circle and you have my 100% support.
Thank you so much.
With that, Councilor Turco, motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you. Motion to approve the application from Christine Lander, 76 Glenway Avenue, Peabody, Mass., for a special permit seeking to allow for a hair salon at 99 Lynn Street. What I did neglect to address is, there's a secondary address for this, which is 101 Lynn Street, so I'd like to add, AKA 101 Lynn Street, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Section 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance.
With conditions, Councilor Turco?
My apologies.
And I'm sorry, Councilor Turco, this is, there's no, there's been no talk of nail salon being added at any point, is that correct?
There was none in the application and none mentioned at the meeting that we had, with the condition of four chairs being usable by active hairdressers at any one time. On the motion.
Okay, you heard the motion. Roll call on the motion.
Councilor Metzouls. Yes. Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozigno.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing, two absent.
Congratulations, welcome and good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor?
If I may, I'd like to acknowledge Councilor-elect Craig Welton is, is in the House. Councilor-elect Craig Welton, welcome, thrilled to have you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Robb. We're going to move to item number five, reports of the committees, we have none, we can move to item six, motions, orders, and resolutions. Councilor Metzouls?
I have no motions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Melville?
No motions.
Councilor O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to accept item 8G and set up a hearing, so moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Under suspension, the rules move to accept item 9F and set up a hearing, so moved.
That pan is dead. Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
And then lastly, I want to take a moment and thank the city clerk's office and the poll workers who, for their work on election day, in special recognition to Tim Spannis, who selflessly postponed his own retirement due to the new voting machines and everything worked well, so thank you. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 7A and invite the mayor as per his request to make the presentation to the city council, so moved.
Thank you, Councilor. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 8H and set up a public hearing, so moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. 8H is in Ward 1, can I take that on your behalf?
You can, and 8A also, if you don't mind.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 8A, so moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 8H and set up a public hearing, so moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
8K is in Ward 5, I'm going to take that on behalf of Councilor Sasslaw. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 8K and, and this is a transfer, move to receive and approve, all papers being in order, so moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Counsel, one more for me, I neglected, 8L is Ward 1 also.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 8L, so moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Rozigno?
Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive item 8C.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions.
Counsel, manning Martin?
No motions, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Sharest?
No motions, but just sadly to have to speak about this time of the year is snow. The snow is going to be coming, to talk to the department head, la bossiere, about, you know, us mainly ward councilors always will get the phone calls on the, you know, it's the street plowards and things of that that we welcome and I'm sure the councilors at large gets those also welcomed, but one of the things they, they do want to, the residents to have and be able to utilize is a call number in case you're not getting a hold of us if we're away or such. And the number is 978-536-7109. Again, 978-536-7109, that is the dispatch number. He welcomes residents to call there with the, an update or issues that they may find with the snow removal and they can get that right out to the area supervisors ASAP. There is a line that's being monitored 24 hours during a storm, so it's going to be very useful for residents to be able to utilize that number. And again, always welcome any phone calls to, to my home with concerns, but I did want to just pass that on. Unfortunately, we're going to be looking in the next, near future, the snow falling, getting old and getting tired of it, but we have to deal with it, so. And that was all, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. You have item 9D for a special permit hearing, if you'd like.
I have no motions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Melville.
No motions.
Councilor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to accept item 8G and set up a hearing. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Under suspension, the rules move to accept item 9F and set up a hearing. So moved.
That panel is dead. Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
And then lastly, I want to take a moment and thank the city clerk's office and the poll workers who, for their work on Election Day. And a special recognition to Tim Spannis, who selflessly postponed his own retirement due to the new voting machines, and everything worked well. So thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 7A and invite the mayor, as per his request, to make the presentation to the city council. So moved.
Thank you, Councilor. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 7B and refer to finance. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 7C. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 8B and refer to finance. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 8D and set up a public hearing. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. 8H is in Ward One. Can I take that on your behalf?
You can. And 8A also, if you don't mind.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 8A. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 8H and set up a public hearing. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
8K is in Ward Five. I'm going to take that on behalf of Councilor Sasslaw. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 8K. And this is a transfer, move to receive and approve, all papers being in order. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Counselor, one more for me. I neglected 8L, is Ward One also.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension, the rules move to receive item 8L. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Rozigno.
Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive item 8C.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions.
Councilor Manning Martin.
No motions, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Charest.
No motions, but just sadly, to have to speak about this time of the year is snow. Snow is going to be coming to talk to Department Head La Bossiere about, you know, us mainly Ward councilors, always will get the phone calls on the, you know, it's the street plowards and things of that that we welcome. And I'm sure the council is at large gets those also welcomed. But one of the things they, they do want to, the residents to have and be able to utilize is a call number, in case you're not getting a hold of us if we're away or such. And the number is 978-536-7109. Again, 978-536-7109. That is the dispatch number. He welcomes residents to call there with the, an update or issues that they may find with the snow removal, and they can get that right out to the area supervisors ASAP. There is a line that's being monitored 24 hours during a storm. So it's going to be very useful for residents to be able to utilize that number. And again, always welcome any phone calls to, to my home with concerns. But I did want to just pass that on. Unfortunately, we're going to be looking in the next near future, the snow falling, getting old and getting tired of it, but we have to deal with it. So, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. You have item 9D for a special permit hearing, if you'd like.
As I do. Thank you. I'd like to suspend, suspend of the rules, accept 9D and set for a hearing.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Could you also take for Councilor Sasslaw, 9C?
9C, Class II Motor Vehicles License Transfer, with all papers, hearings necessary. Set up for a hearing, please.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did anyone do 8G yet? Okay.
Yes, sir. The only thing we have left.
Under suspension of the rules, not under suspension, yes, under suspension of the rules, approval of taxi driver license, Jamie Mejia, license 40, all papers being in order.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
And 9B, Taxi Cab License Transfer, Tri-City License Number Seven, approved, all papers being in order.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
And 9E, Utility Contractors License, WAM General Contractors, Inc., 363 Cabbage Street, Beverly, JBC Utility LLC, 38 Bow Street, Center Road, Bow Center Road, Bow, New Hampshire, approve, all papers being in order.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have one motion for DPS to install a "Not a Through Way" or a "Dead End Sign" at the end of Longview Way at Lynn Street. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. And could I get a, Councilor McGinn?
Move to adjourn, Mr. President.
On the motion, everybody have a wonderful evening.